...items on the agenda. We got rid of the one item, item J, that was going to do the committee board's appointments tonight. We decided to get rid of that. All the items we read, one reading title only, except item B is going to be a first reading.
You say B?
Yes, B is going to be just the first reading. We don't act on that, right, Mr. Fortunato?
Uh, no, first reading. I just checked with the zoning inspector and goes the planning and then when planning, uh, we got the recommendation from the plan and then he gets out of public hearing.
So we could do that title only?
Uh, yes.
We're good on that?
First reading only.
Yeah, first reading, title only. Item number eight, Mr. Rogers, you can do that?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Scobol, item B. Mr. Morve, item C. Mayor K, item D. Mr. Rogers, item E.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scobol, item F. Mr. Morve, item G. Mayor K, item H. And Mr. Rogers, item I. Any other changes, anything? About your name, please rise for the pledge of duty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, for real, call them here.
Mr. Z.
Here.
Mr. K.
Present.
Mr. Morve.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
We have five. We have a four meeting is in session. Item number four, approval of minutes from December fourth. Any additions, corrections, changes? Hearing none, the minutes stand. Item number five, reading of communications. Mr. Rogers?
I am none.
Mr. Scobol?
None.
Mr. Morve?
Pretty quiet.
Not I had any.
Uh, I do for Garland and Glendy, Joe. What's the update on that valve that's been leaking since summertime?
On the update on?
Garland, the valve that's been leaking, the water valve leak?
I have nothing, nothing to report yet on that. The, oh wait, you're talking about the hydrant?
Yes, the water valve that's been leaking since summertime?
Yeah, that, again, it's, it's a small leak that they're just allowing it to go on because they're just kind of, you know, keep up with the other work with the...
Where's letting that water go down the drain for six months?
Uh, yeah, it's not, it's nothing that's spewing out or blowing out, but the other it's leaking, there's no question about it.
Mr. Morino?
Yeah, the only correspondence I had was a, a letter from Chakteesh resigning from the income tax review board effective December 31st as he'll be taking on other responsibilities after that day.
Moving on to item number six, reports committee's board and city manager. Mr. Rogers, head of the, Mr. Scobol?
Uh, fire department, again, we had a meeting here just a couple of days ago and you've heard about the ISO ratings changes that occurred in the township especially. And believe it or not, that particular endeavor has benefited township people. The fire chief has heard from a number of different people who have gotten premium rebates already, the smallest of which is $250. So their endeavor there, which was a two and a half year in the territory to improve the, the operation, the facilities available to the public through the fire department, has really paid off and continues to pay off though. Again, they credit to the joint fire district.
Mr. Morino?
Yeah, just add to the fire district, the website is being updated, so if you'd like to go on and look through, peruse through there, you see that it's under construction. But within a week, it'll be up and running and it'll be a lot more information for you to look at. The, the calls, the reports, it'll all be online. The minutes, I believe, are going to be online. So, and it just, it's, we're just going to make a better commitment to keep it updated and people more informed, so.
Okay. Just as you remember, last month, I reported a record amount of collection from mayor's court. I looked at tomorrow night's agenda and it looks like we could have come closer, couldn't we? And I think what's happening is these people are all coming in confessing their crime when Bernie takes over. So next month's financial report should be a healthy one, okay?
Planning and zoning, item number eight, is to put all the lots together for the library. Item number B is to change some of the stuff with our sign ordinance. We want to lower the restrictions. We want to put landscaping around.
Mr. Morino?
We have nine items of pleasanation to be dealt with this evening. Talked about a couple of them already, but the first one is a replat, accepting replat of the lots 175, 213, and 214 located just east of us right here. This is the property, getting it all into one parcel in preparation of the plans for the new library. The second item, as was discussed previously, just requires a first reading and then that goes back to planning. Third item is declaring surplus property. This is a collection of weapons that have been confiscated over the last couple of years, of which their cases have been resolved or closed out. Would like to get rid of those. Next one is a temporary appropriation ordinance and this is basically the funding apparatus for the first three months of the year until we get our budget in place. Next one is a motion advancing funds. The next three basically are motions advancing funds for projects which we anticipate there'll be some spending in the first three months. And these are projects that will get reimbursement from either through OPWC or the Appalachian Regional Commission and the federal OBI task force. So they're all reimbursable projects of which, again, there'll be some spending in the first three months and then we'll get that money back. And the next one is a motion changing the date of the council meeting for the first meeting in January. This will be a regular meeting. It'll also be the reorganizational meeting and the swearing in preceding the meeting. And that's Friday, January 3rd. The swearing in will be at 5:45 and then the actual meeting will begin at 6:00 PM.
So who's, who's going to be doing that swearing in tomorrow?
Uh, Judge Hunter will be here at 5:45 to swear in the new members of council. I saw a new member, Dan, Don Dragus, he's back in the audience here.
Yeah, it's good to see.
Getting his feet wet.
With the seating.
So our mayor and our councilman, Chakteesh, so we have full attendance. And lastly is a motion providing for an addendum to an agreement with the current city manager. And this basically memorializes the action that was taken back in 2011, which allowed me to take the vehicle from the office to home each day. We did that without amending the contract. When we were audited by the IRS, they're charging the city the full tax value of the vehicle as if I was using it 24 hours a day, 365 days a year versus just the 4 miles from here to my home. So what it's doing is costing, costs the city $6,000 in, in taxes for 2011 by applying this language, which is basically just the permission to take it from here to my home. It would only be $2,500, I believe, so it's a big savings for the city. And that's basically it. I guess, you know, because I have nothing to report on the 24-inch line as yet. We've still waiting for O.D. to grant us permission to access the line from State Route 11 and so we can do a couple more exploratory digs and see what the condition of the pipe is beyond the Ohio Turnpike.
Mr. Fortunato?
Free report tonight. The Charter Review Commission had their last meeting earlier this evening and they are going to submit to council, I believe, nine amendments to the charter for council's consideration. You'll have that report, that recommendation from Charter Review Commission before the end of the year and then council can act on it sometime in early 2014. The recommendations from the Charter Review Commission, it's up to council to determine which ones, if any, that council wants to submit to the ballot.
With council sponsorship?
Yeah. Yeah, in this instance, that is with council sponsorship. And then since this is my time to talk, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you, Andy, Dan, and the mayor for the opportunity to serve with you. I've enjoyed every minute of it. I wish you nothing but the best and it's really been my pleasure.
Thank you. Mr. Tavak?
Thank you. The only thing I have to report on tonight is the North Broad Safety Upgrade Project. Probably all are aware, operations pretty much have wound down for this construction season. Unfortunately, I think that we're all a little bit tired of the snow and winter weather that we've been seeing since what began in November. I think that if we would have had some normal weather, the stuff that, or the weather we've been seeing in the last several years, that project would have been completed by now. They, they are continuing to work on the lighting though on the west side. I know I drove up, it was last week, it was either Wednesday or Thursday night, and the lighting on the east side is finished. It looks pretty good. Come the end of March, the beginning of April, they'll start back up again, do all of the sidewalks, the curving in front of the, the wing walls on the culvert that was extended there. That was, I know there was some concern by council recently. That's been backfilled. And we are going to be watching for, you know, possibly we have some heavy rains coming in this weekend. It's my understanding it's going to be like 50 or 55 degrees. So we would ask if anybody in the city or the police department or whoever would see some issues out there, let Joan know and get, get in hold of it on this because that'd be in our office. Like I said, the sidewalks and the approaches and then the final paving. There was one issue out there with some pavement that was not in the widened portion. Contractor did take care of that and again, we just have to watch out hopefully how it will stay like that.
Hey, I just have a couple of questions for you. I know we, and I'm so glad to see that those wings are in and that's filled because I thought that was very dangerous there. But we poured that concrete, it was rather cold. Do we have assurance that, you know, the materials and the cold is going to be okay? I mean, I mean, I don't know anything about construction, but how is it when you work with some air in the cold? I know we poured some of those, even those curving, and it was rather cold. Is there, you give us some kind of assurance that that's going to be a...
There is a two-year maintenance bond on that. And so that, that's one thing. Contractors and body did take care of that. There's, you know, added some of the concrete that we provided. I know that we were out and built last, I think it was Thursday on another project and we went by a, was, I don't know if they're building a hotel or whatever in Fordham and I think it was like six or eight degrees out in there pouring concrete. So, you know, that happens all the time.
Right, the pavement, right by where that, where that area that we're talking about with the wings?
Yes.
It looks like it's like chipping up almost. But I know there's going to be a finished coat on that, but is there any concern with the pavement that's down there already or that's just going to be all covered up anyway?
Well, that would be covered up. It's, one of the things is that if you're referring to something that's out near the curb line?
This is right in the middle of the road. It just looks like it's like chipping up or whatever.
Breaking up?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, there is a possibility. There could be some substandard pavement there from, from previous widening operations or whatever was there. I know that at the, I don't know if you want to call it a pothole, but the area that was fixed, when we put the, when we widened the road, we put in six inches of 304, six inches of 304 slag, 301, which is asphalted concrete, and then an inch and a half of the intermediate course prior to putting the inch and a half of final, the final course or surface course on next year when the plants reopen and after that all the curving and everything is done there. We found out that in that area that was breaking up, there was probably only two, two and a half inches of asphalt. And we did about six whorings out there. Within two feet or three feet of where that wheel route was or that area that was breaking up, there's nine inches of asphalt. So, I don't know, you know. Our widen portion is much more substantial.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, yeah, that's kind of the roll of dice. We're just going to have to, to see how that holds up over the winter.
Yeah, I have the same question as John had as regard to concrete, but mine is aimed at the asphalt. That asphalt was also laid down with below freezing temperatures and, you know, what are the expectations for that? You know, once the, the final coat goes on in January, that's all buried and undetectable. Is that the way to go forward with this thing? So that it lasts an appropriate length of time?
Actually, the asphalt will not go down until probably April, mid-April, so.
The finish coat. I'm talking about what's down there now. What, what you see in terms of blacktop on that road now, okay, it's the, the base type asphalt.
Yes.
Okay. That was laid in, in below freezing temperatures. Again, how is, how are we expecting to see that hold up going forward? And again, my, my term going forward means in the spring, when you put that final coat of asphalt on, you're not going to see what's underneath until it actually cracks the, the surface coat and the final coat. Is that what we should have done there? Put it down in the freezing weather?
Well, you know, there, there's probably several ways to approach that. Number one, the plants are still open. The contractor knows that he has a two-year maintenance bond on that road. And if it's going to break apart, it's going to break apart over the winter.
So you seen that before they went to the final coat?
Yeah. Sure, you're, you're going to see that before. I mean, we saw the one area where it was substandard from the original roadway and that broke apart immediately after it was milled. But unfortunately, you have to, you have to mill the road to get that intermediate layer down. Otherwise, you're going to have that widen portion and now you're going to have, you know, it's going to be a little bit dangerous putting traffic on that. So it's...
It's a tricky situation to say the best.
Yes, but it, it happens. And this isn't the, the first time or the only time that this would happen, just on this project. It's, it happens in a lot of areas.
Mr. Tavak, also, I spoke with Mr. Morino last week about the project. Now, how long is this project supposed to last? Nine days?
I think this was a 90 days.
Now, I was told the clock stopped a while back or something, but they continue working. They're still working out there now. How can that be? And do we have an inspector out there? I haven't seen an inspector this week out there. Do we have one out there this week?
Uh, my understanding is yes. I was out last week after the, and there was very minimal work being done out there with the, the wing wall, but our inspector was out there.
I did see him last week. This week I've not seen him. And we've had traffic, there's no traffic control going on this week at all. Have they been working out there other than the electrical? Electrical all three days. Doesn't that count as the contractor working? How can that, I, I'm confused on when you bid a job that you bid it for 90 days. You started in, what, the second week of September?
Yes.
And the job gets shut down, but you're still working out there.
The contract, well...
When did the job get shut down in the calendar days?
Actually, the job has not been shut down because they're actually going out there. They're working on the electrical.
Joe, you told me it was shut down.
We suspended everything but the electrical, basically, all of the...
And culvert also?
The...
When, when did we suspend the job?
I don't have, I don't have the date, but it was right around Thanksgiving, I believe.
Thanksgiving, a month ago?
Close to a month.
Well, no, because they were, they were out there working on the culvert. They were out there every day.
Since Thanksgiving.
I mean, that was the only thing we allowed them to finish, were the wing wall. But the project itself was suspended as far as doing the sidewalk curving, any more paving.
We have a question here.
What was the actual suspension date?
I don't know.
Somebody ought to know what's going on here. I mean, you know...
Yeah, I mean, we, we have all of that on the reports.
But I'm confused when I drive by and they're doing all kinds of work out there. And they're still working out there today. That, that just blows my mind that we suspended the calendar for the 90 days, but now the sun were saying, "Do whatever you want."
Well, no, it's not "do whatever you want." They went out, they put the wing walls in, okay? And we told them that after the wing walls are in and it occurs, they were going to backfill because there was also a safety issue there. But they're not performing any other work other than that wing wall and they're doing the backfill.
But what about the first two weeks of December, they're performing other work out there?
Well, they were, yes. That's what they were.
But it got suspended in November, we're being told. How are they working in December with suspension?
I don't have a date here. It was in, I think, and I put that in my memo, whatever date it was, when we, we had a job meeting in this room.
What's the date, Joe?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. If you want me to get it out?
Well, you should know. You should know because this is a big issue that you've got contractor working on a job that you bid it to have it done in 90 days. Everybody bid the job to have it done in 90 days. This guy's working without a calendar on. Explain that to me. Explain how that's right.
Well, we could, we could have him stop from working on the electrical.
You're too great. You've already done it for a week.
Why would you want to, why would you want to stop them when they can do that type of...
Why would we stop? We should have kept the calendar going, Joe.
Why?
That disappointing. What do you mean, why? Isn't that how projects work? You bid it for 90 days, you finish it?
Right, but you can't, just as we discussed, you can't put asphalt down in the snow.
Okay, I'm fine with that, but why are they doing the other work on the project?
Because they can't. They can continue to, they can continue to do that work. Why would you stop them?
Legally, right? Because you're Fortunato, that you bid a job and it worked whatever.
I think, I think if you bid it for 90 days and we accepted the bid, I think it's perfectly fine to suspend the parts of the project that can't be done during the winter months.
Just parts of a project.
And there obviously, there obviously are. So you could suspend the whole project for a period of time during the winter.
I've seen that done. I've seen that.
If the contractor wants to get done what he can get done, what the city would authorize him to do during that period of suspension, I think that's a good thing for the city.
Now, my next question is, are we paying for the inspector to be there more than 90 days then? Or who's going to pay that one?
That, that I don't know.
Well, that's the whole question. You either have a 90-day job or you don't, okay? And if the job continues, as a matter of fact, whether it's in part or in whole, more than 90 days, then it's costing us in the end more money to have inspectors on the job for those extra days that are being used by the contractor to do what he wants. And, and that's the shortfall for me. I'm a, I'm a finance guy, okay? And if you, and if you put a contract out there for 90 days work and, and you, you work more than 90 days, those inspectors that we're talking about now cost us more money. You know, what's the, what's the very essence of doing a 90-day contract if, if it's going to not work?
You know, the other, that's, the other part of this is other contractors have bid on this job. They're saying, "Hey, we bid for 90 days, or you can get the job." That is what I thought it was going to be working on.
But I think everybody understood there was going to be a suspension for a period of time.
And suspend the whole door going, "Hey."
And again, I understand.
Okay. And if it's not possible because there's, there's really safety problems at the time you want to suspend, then you shouldn't suspend. And anything more than 90 days than it takes that contractor to do the job is a problem.
Well, you can't pay them in the snow. I mean, you just can't do that, right? So it's going to have to be suspended. And to get them out there...
I'm not talking about the payments. That's one item.
Well, I'm just saying, you said suspend, you know, and do it in 90 days. I think you got to suspend the part that can't be done in the winter. The issue about the inspection cost during the period where the contractor wants to go out there?
That's the question for me.
That's, that's, I guess that's an issue.
Yeah, it's an issue. It really is.
You still, you, you are able to control that purse, that purse string though, because that contract is set up for so much. If in fact, there's a modification that's requested in the future, it is totally upon the city to approve or disapprove that.
To say no to your changeover for extra hours of inspection? Or are you speaking of taking the inspector off when the paving starts? Because we're on hours. Because we used it while it was suspended?
Yeah, I, I don't, that, that's, that will not happen.
Well, we've seen it. We've seen the inspection piece go up on other projects here.
Well, I'm not, I can't speak for those. You weren't here, correct?
Okay, I think we got to get that, that type of thing under control a whole lot better than what we have it because in the end, it's costing the city more money than we all anticipated to do the job when these kind of things occur.
Not knowing anything about construction, do we have, do we have inspectors that are inspecting this electrical work that's going on? Or is that not inspected? Is that something that gets inspected?
I believe that we have the elector. If it's required to have the elector. It's not required to have somebody 24 hours a day or watching.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I mean, just, you know.
The proof of putting on the electrical, the, doesn't light.
Yeah.
Which is more of a...
Yeah, but now, wait, wait, now, I know a little bit about that, because you want to make sure your connections are done correct, that you don't use duct tape and it's going to be in two years, the lights are going to burn out. I mean, there's a lot more inspection work than what you're saying.
That's true. They don't have to be standing there over top of all...
Some inspector should be for the hours they're working. I mean, that's why we have an inspector. That's why we have MS consultants inspecting the jobs.
They shouldn't have to be standing there over their shoulder while they're wiring the wire.
Well, I was an inspector and I saw some, uh, contractors and I, the stuff we dealt with Faust Construction, I think somebody needs to hold their hand on the whole job, especially Faust.
Well, that's not Faust doing it. That's his subcontractor.
Well, he's responsible.
Correct. Yes, he is. And he still has a two-year maintenance agreement.
Okay, from my, from my standpoint, we got to do a much better job when it comes to, to running these particular jobs so that in the end, the city doesn't have to pay more money than it thought it should. And that, for me, is the biggest issue. And that, that grinds me some fears. For our pocketbook to get, have to pay out more money for a job that we anticipated, for me, is wrong.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, recommendations of persons designed to report counsel. Mr. Makia.
Good evening. I'm Frank Makia. I'm here at 2:20. Life is full of changes. To something means fear and uncertainty. Others embrace it and look forward to what it brings. Whether we like it or not, it's a fact of life. Maybe your career, work, family, or organizations to which you belong. Tonight is the last meeting for three of our council members. They will bring a change to each of you and the city council. Bill, you served well both in school system and as a mayor. You've always represented the city in a professional manner. You've always been a gentleman.
Thank you, Brian.
Dan, you stood up for what you think is right. You have not been afraid to say no if you disagree. Personally, I admire that. Andy, you've been a resource for the city administration. You have devoted a lot of your personal time. Many times, you took your time to elaborate on an issue. You kept a close eye on the city finances. You've been a hazard. I thank each of you for your service to the city and you can be proud of it. Finally, Merry Christmas to all and a happy, healthy new year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minkler?
Evening. Robert Minkler, 81 Montgomery Lane, number one. And I'm speaking on behalf not of just myself, but my, my fantasy resides at the same address.
A bit apart, I think.
And what I, I, I did not prepare anything as Mr. Makia did because I wanted to be more extender. And I wanted to thank each of you who's leading the post for the work that you have done, the dedication you've shown to the state. Although we not always agree on things, not just among council members, but among citizens. That's what I enjoy about our country. And we see that here in our city. And I hope the new administration takes that to heart and operates as strongly as you all have. I've been here many times, speaking of problems in, in my area where I live. You spoke to those, although I thought it might have taken too long. You did put in half worth of effort. You did work towards those things. And I've seen that throughout all the agendas and items that come before you. So I wanted to thank you. I know some, I thought, had written what I felt were crass comments about the members of the council in the fact of, you know, keeping score. We should all be together and not one team against another. And I also want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, joyous holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. McKee.
Mrs. Brundt.
First, politically correct or not, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Second, Mr. Mayor, I will miss your quotes at the end of the meeting and looking forward to working with you on tree sitting, which I would be doing anyways. But anyways, number three, I will miss hearing from Mr. Frazini, Mr. Scovola, and the mayor making your decisions and deliberations here at the council meetings. Four, Frank, I'm following your listings. I will be glad to see Mr. Morbe and Mr. Rogers and welcome Mr. Mayor Lektozar and Mr. Tisch. You will still be seeing me sitting in the front row. Fifth, good wishes to the outgoing members and also thank you so much for your service. And sixth, and finally, I am German, so, so long, farewell. I'll be here same goodbye.
Moving on to item number eight, old business. We have item number nine, new business. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption upon the same with first reading. Do I have a second? Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes. That passes five nothing. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title alone throughout the second. Mr. Rogers, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Mr. Rogers?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance approving the reflet of Canfield lots number, sorry, lots number one seventy-five, two thirteen, two fourteen, at three nine West Main Street and forty-eight East Street by Ruben Building Free Library Association. I move for passage of this ordinance.
Do I have a second? Mr. K, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Clerk the number, please.
Twenty thirteen dash forty-two.
Thank you. Moving on to item number B. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title alone. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Mr. Scovola?
This is the first reading only, that doesn't require a vote. Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance amending section eleven eighty-three point oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Canfield having to do with signed ordinances.
Moving on to item number C. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption, same upon its first reading, do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title alone throughout the second. Second. Mr. Rogers, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Mr. Morbe?
Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing its disposal. I move for passage.
Do I have a second? Mr. Scovola, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes. That passes five nothing. Clerk the number, please.
Twenty thirteen dash forty-three.
Thank you. Moving on to item number D. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption upon its first reading. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title alone throughout the second. Mr. K, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Mayor K?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance, temporary appropriation ordinance. Mr. President, I move for passage.
Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion.
Yes, for the clarification of those sitting in the audience, this is a temporary budget for the year two thousand and fourteen. And it's mandated that such a temporary budget, or even a permanent budget, be put in place so that this government can continue to function as of January one. Without such a budget, a temporary budget as this one is, the government would have to check that.
Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Clerk the number, please.
Twenty thirteen dash forty-four.
Thank you. Moving on to item number E. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of two readings of the proposed motion and authorized adoption upon its first reading. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed motion and authorized reading by title alone throughout the second. Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Mr. Rogers?
Mr. President, I have a motion advancing funds from the street that see on our fund to the Broad Street safety upgrade, phase two fund. I move for passage of this motion, Mr. President.
Do I have a second? Second. Mr. K, discussion.
Again, just for the clarification of the opposing audience, there are two more motions of exactly the same thing, but dealing with different funds. Here, when we have a job like the North Broad Street project, we go out and we surge out grants to pay for a goodly portion of that job, basically anywhere from sixty to eighty percent. Once we get the grant approved, we move forward with the job, but the grant is basically not paid until after we have the obligation to pay some of the contracts. So we advance monies from one fund account, the general fund account in this case, to the North Broad Street Phase Two Fund, both in terms of cash accounts and fund balances. These motions anticipate what I just said. And as the job progresses and before we get the money from the government through its grant, these advanced funds are used to pay the bills the contractor sent us. In the end, they're reimbursed. When we get the grant money back, they're returned to the fund that advanced them. So you needed a little bit of an explanation. And again, there's two more motions doing exactly the same.
Thank you. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Clerk the number, please.
Twenty thirteen dash thirteen.
Thank you. Moving on to item number F. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of two readings of the proposed motion and authorized adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Mr. President, on the motions, you don't need that.
Oh, just the title alone.
Thank you. Yeah. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed motion and authorized reading by title alone throughout the second. Second. Mr. Scovola, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Mr. Scovola?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion advancing funds from the general fund, the OBI Task Force Grant Fund for the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, and I move for approval.
Do I have a second? Mr. Rogers, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Clerk the number, please.
Twenty thirteen dash fourteen.
Thank you. Moving on to item number T. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed motion and authorized reading by title alone. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Clerk the number, please.
That was for time.
Oh, okay. Mr. Morbe.
We're on G.
Yes.
Yeah, we're on G.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I have a motion advancing funds from the water fund to the twenty-four-inch water supply transmission line fund, and I move for passage.
Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Rogers, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Now they're open.
Twenty thirteen dash fifteen.
Thank you. Moving on to item number H. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed motion and authorized reading by title alone. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Mayor K?
Mr. President, I have a motion changing the date of council meeting for the first meeting in January. I move for passage of this motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion.
Again, a little explanation. You may be wondering why we're changing the date. The council needs on the first and third Wednesday. The first Wednesday in January is January first, and that being a holiday, we thought appropriate to switch the date.
Are all the new members good with that?
Well, in addition, you need the organizational meeting within five days of the beginning of the year or something.
Oh, okay.
That's another point, too.
Clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scovola?
Yes.
That passes five nothing. Clerk the number, please.
Twenty thirteen dash sixteen.
Thank you. Moving on to item number I. As per the provisions of section four point oh five of the charter of city camp, I need the council's expense requirement of full reading of the proposed motion and authorized reading by title alone. Do I have a second? Mr. Rogers? Discussion, clerk.
Mr. Frazini?
Yes.
Mr. K?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Scholz?
Yes. That passes five, nothing. Mr. Rogers?
Okay, I have a motion providing an intendant to the agreement for the current city manager. I move for passage of this motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion?
Well, I was against this back when it was brought up. I can see the reason that the car go two miles and go back two miles. I was for leaving it here.